Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular school board meeting, the last one for the year 2019. Ah, we've had a long year, but it's been a very good year for Spring ISD. And tonight, we have a couple of projects that we will do. We'll introduce a new board member and a few other good activities. So, thank you to our guests who are here for joining us. I know the weather was pretty bad, but you made it. We appreciate you. So, the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order Tuesday, December 10th, 2019. Time is now 7:02 PM. Board Trustees present Winford Adams Jr., Deborah Jensen, Justine Durant, Jenna Gonzalez, Dawn Davis, and myself, Rhonda Newhouse. I would like to ask everyone to turn off or silence their cell phones or any electronic devices that you have at this time, please. Thank you. For tonight's presentation of the color guards, I would like to ask Captain Davis if he will introduce our color guard.
Thank you, Madam President, it's my pleasure. Tonight's presentation of color guard led by National Award-winning Westfield Mustangs ROTC Cadet Battalion, under command of Battalion Command William Garcia. Garcia, I'm sorry. The Westfield Mustang Battalion attended the Battle of the Bayou Region Competition at Sam Sember High School on November 2nd, 2019. Female color guard team placed second out of eighteen teams. That's a great achievement. Defending the region event, under command Battalion Executive Officer Herion Neros, Texas Flags Sergeant Transio Miles, US Army Beret, Army Beret Cadet Battalion William Garcia-Gaza, and Texas Army Beret Cadet Corporal Damian Vega. February 11th, 2019, the Mustang Battalion hosted the annual Betches Day Parade, where one in seven-one cadets participated as we awarded betches with substantive appreciation. JROTC Cadet also went across the street to adopt a retired home and present a certificate that all the vets have spent quality time with them. Tonight, the US and Texas pledge be led by Cadet Private First Class Dion Russell, Cadet Color Guard Commander carrying the Army flag, Cadet Executive Officer Herion Neros carrying the Texas flag, Cadet Sergeant Transio Miles, US Guard Private First Class Alexander Sanchez, Texas Guard Cadet Corporal Damian Vega. US JRC Westfield Army ROTC Color Guard, its program is under command, Inscribed Major Charles R. Thompson and First Sergeant Carlos Jackson. At this time, everyone please rise for the flag pledge. And once it's completed, please remain standing. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask if you will observe a moment of silence in your own way, please. Thank you. You may be seated. Tonight, we will swear in the recently elected trustees and candidate. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Chief of Staff, Julie Hill. You will please silence all electronic devices and cell phones. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Watson, trustees. The Spring Independent School District recently held an election for trustee position one, trustee position two, and trustee position three. The election was held on November 5th, 2019. The candidate elected to trustee position one is Dr. Deborah Jensen. The candidate elected to trustee position two is Kelly Hodges. The candidate elected to trustee position three is Justine Durant. I would like to ask Dr. Jensen, Ms. Hodges, and Ms. Durant to join me inside the horseshoe. Beginning with Dr. Jensen, this certificate of election certifies that you were elected trustee position one of the Spring Independent School District at the general election on November 5th, 2019. Ms. Hodges, this certificate of election certifies that you were elected trustee position two of the Spring Independent School District on November 5th, 2019. Ms. Durant, this certificate of election certifies that you were elected to trustee position three of the Spring Independent School District on November 5th, 2019. In just a moment, I would ask, well, first, I'd ask that everyone join me in congratulating all three of our trustees. We are going to have them sign their officer's statement. Let me first read what the statement says. "I, each trustee, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute any money or thing of value, or promised any public office or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at this election for which I was elected or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be, so help me God." So, we have three pens, and we're going to get you to sign your statements. Beginning with Dr. Jensen. Thank you very much. Once again, let's give them a round of applause. So, you will now take your oath of office. And I would like to recognize Jason Schaefer, our Director of Board Services, who will administer the oath to you.
Good evening, Dr. Jensen. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Deborah Jensen.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for the Spring Independent School District of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So, help me God. Ms. Hodges, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I. State your name. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for the Spring Independent School District of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So, help me God. Ms. Durant, please repeat after me. I. Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of School Board Trustee for the Spring Independent School District of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So, help me God. And if I can just get you to sign your oath?
So, I'd ask that you please join me once again in congratulating Dr. Jensen, Ms. Hodges, and Ms. Durant. I would also, at this time, beginning with Dr. Jensen, ask if you have anyone in the audience that you would like to acknowledge tonight, so that we can acknowledge their support for you.
My mom and my sister who's here from St. Louis. And Barbara, they've been my friends since high school. Carter Richard, my Aunt Barbara, and my Aunt Miss Helen in Omaha. Mr. Ruben. And my babies, the reason I designed the road are in the back.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. Thank you. Welcome aboard and welcome back.
Ms. Hodges, we welcome you. Winford, do we need to adjust her chair over there?
We'll get her squared.
Thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you.
For our next item, we will have the superintendent's remarks. So, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Rodney Watson.
Thank you, Ms. Newhouse and other trustees. First of all, once again, congratulations. As Jason was reading it, I think I heard Jason speak more just a few minutes ago than I've heard him speak in six years. It's nice to hear your voice, Jason. But once again, thank you all so much for joining us today. I have a few announcements. Last week, we spent a considerable amount of time reviewing our education planning guide, and we're really excited to be able to bring those to our families at an earlier date. These guys are going, these guides are going to be valuable for us and our students as they work with their counselors and their parents to select their courses for next year. We're excited about being able to bring these guides to families to help them plan, and they also will be on our website. So, once we get them approved tonight, we're going to make them available to our counselors and our parents in print and on our website, so they can begin the scheduling process. I would ask that our parents and students stay tuned for more information, especially as our counselors gear up to meet them after winter break. I'm sure many of you all are excited about our Winter Wonderland that happened last Friday. I saw hundreds of you out last Friday at our annual fifth Winter Wonderland literacy event at Decane High School. It was truly a wonderful evening with so many families spending time together with different crafts related to holiday-themed books. Of course, a highlight of the evening was the fact that every child who attended the event was able to take home a wrapped book, thanks to a very generous donation of our Spring ISD Education Foundation. Let's give them a round of applause. It's great to have the support of our foundation. Finally, it was amazing to see that our students had a chance to play in the man-made snow. Some of us from Missouri are really aware of snow, but Texans aren't aware of snow, and so it was nice to see the kids outside being able to play in the man-made snow. In terms of Spring Rewards, I did send you all an email this past week of the video that we kicked off for Spring Rewards. We formally kicked off last week our next phase of our strategic compensation program, which we call Spring Rewards. This program has been around for many years and making, and making, and thanking the board's support for many years for helping us get this. If you remember, over the past several years, we've been slowly rolling out different components of it, and so we thank you for your leadership. Our human resources team sent out a communication to all eligible teachers and classroom paraprofessionals outlining how the program works. And one of the things that you all had asked for us to do was to include our paraprofessionals, and so you were able to see we were able to do that. In a nutshell, all full-time teachers and campus-based classroom paraprofessional staff with four or fewer absences for the 2019-20 school year are eligible to participate. Classroom paraprofessionals have the opportunity to earn up to $2,250 pre-tax through Spring Rewards, where classroom teachers may earn up to $4,000 pre-tax dollars. We're excited to be able to offer these incentives to help the needle, to help move the needle towards student achievement by motivating top performance and employee engagement. I would encourage all of you to visit the Spring Rewards website at springisd.org/springrewards for more details. Once again, thank you for your leadership and your support as we roll out Spring Rewards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Watson. I'd like to ask trustees if you have any remarks you'd like to share tonight.
Well, I, being a former Mustang, I just wanted to salute and congratulate our Westfield football team. I have a history of Westfield. They went to state in 2006 and lost to Tyler Lee. And last time they'd been to the semifinals was in 2014. So, this is a year to go all the way. Go Mustangs!
I attended the Celebrate CTE event last Thursday. It was, it was nice to see all of our CTE students out there, advisors, and our administrators from our campuses. The CTE students and our culinary arts groups provided all of our snacks that evening and appetizers, and I believe Winford and Jensen were there. It was a nice time to get to visit with other business partners as well as administrators. So, thank y'all for putting on such a great event.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to comment on how honored I am of the support of the community to give me an opportunity to serve on the Board of Trustees. And I'm grateful, and I never take that for granted. So, I wanted to make that statement. I attended our fifth Winter Wonderland, and it has got to be one of the biggest, most supported event that we have in the district. It is growing. Do we have a count? Do we have any idea approximately how many participants?
We believe we're a little under a thousand, but we are tabulating the cards that our students turn in for the books. So, we were a little lower this year than we have been in the past, but still really high attendance.
Yeah, thousands, thousand people there, kids there. The line for making ice cream, they learned how to make ice cream was so, I actually wanted some, but the line was too long. They all were able to get a book. I got a chance to ride around on the Polar Express. And all of the drill teams and our quartet, the guys that played the trumpets, I'm not sure what they're called, but they were able to perform for the kids as they went around. And so, if you have not attended that event, don't miss it next year. I was just in a bad mood that day, and I left there excited to see the kids just running around, reading Santa by the fireplace. It was just a wonderful event. And so, I just wanted to talk a little bit tonight about how wonderful it was. Congratulate our communications department and team and everyone that worked hard to put it together, because it was a grand success.
I loved all three events that you all described. So, let me add one more, and that is the Veterans Memorial at Ford Stadium. That was just an awesome, solemn, beautiful, beautiful event. If you have not gotten to see the Veterans Memorial yet, this is a wonderful thing that I think Spring ISD has done for our community to honor our veterans. We have every branch of the military represented there, as well as missing in action veterans. And it is a wonderful place to visit, so please come out and see it.
Am I forced to say something? Well, I would like to say thank you. I am so excited. Thank you for the text messages, emails I've received, and just the love and support from the community. And I definitely want to thank my family and friends who are here tonight. And I am so excited and just looking forward to serving my community.
I just want to offer my congratulations to Dr. Jensen and Justine, and welcome you, Kelly. It's, it's a testament to the community's engagement with the school district. And we talk about people voting and being politically active, and this is where I think the rubber meets the road. And I'm really glad to see that we continue to have quality people seeking these positions and gaining these positions. Also, want to comment on the Veterans Memorial, how proud I was to see all the JROTC squads out there, particularly the leadership, the spring leadership group of middle school kids. Very impressive. And again, I talked about making this a district of choice, and I think we are, we're definitely on our way, and I want to thank Dr. Watson for that.
I'd be real missed to not offer thank you to our Board President. Last board meeting, I asked him to reach out to a cousin and ask him if we'd be our speaker at the ceremony, who's a four-star general. And just, just the history of a grade school children having a chance to shake hands with a general, general is history all by itself. Thank you. Thank you for, he already told me, I got connection, I can invite him back if I want to. That's what it's all about, though, our children, to have a chance to make that connection in a difficult situation, if they might have opportunity anywhere else.
Oh, you're quite welcome. He's always supportive of students.
Some West Point recommendation.
He is a West Point graduate. I'd like to ditto all of the board's comments, and also remind Board Member Justine Durant, you want some of that ice cream. See, chief, he has the recipe, how to make the ice cream. It was done by the police department. The police department, not only did the ice cream, they did little identification cards where we had lines of kids and parents there. The students had a chance to get right there identification card, their names, their parents' names. They got their thumbprint on there that they could carry, and it was a very good safety means for the students and the parents. And parents stood in line to get that, chief, so that was a real good idea. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll get the recipe from. Thank you. Our next item is Spotlight Awards. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize our Assistant Director of Planning and Visual Arts, David Langree.
Good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, and members of the board. Give us one moment. We're going to get set up to present for you, and then we'll be with you in a moment. Thank you.
Sure.
Tonight, I am honored to be here to recognize our 2019 Superintendent's Holiday Card Contest winners. If you didn't know, there are over 15,000 elementary scholars who take elementary art in our district. Each elementary school had the opportunity to select what they felt was their best artwork for the contest. And then after that, members of the cabinet and Dr. Watson voted for the winners. Tonight, we're going to recognize our top three winners. Next week, in our Winter Collaborative, next Monday, we will recognize the top ten winners as well during the show. All right, so tonight, as you can see, we have beautiful artwork. This is the blown-up size. All right. So, tonight, as you can see, we have beautiful artwork. This is the blown-up size. These are not the holiday cards that we would mail tonight. But we are so honored to be able to showcase their work tonight. So, our third-place student is Annie Pashon, who had Waiting for Christmas from North Gate Crossing Elementary School with teacher Jessica Gilland. Now, unfortunately, Annie's flight was canceled back to Houston tonight. We found out just before the board meeting. However, Ms. Gilland is here tonight and will accept on her behalf. And we'll get to recognize her again next Monday. Our second-place winner is Abigail Watson with Snowy Night from Winship Elementary School, teacher Deanna Westner. This is her artwork over on the corner. And I do know that she has some family here. Family, would you please stand and be recognized right now? And our winner this year of the 2019 Spring ISD Superintendent's Holiday Card Contest is Joshua Castro with First Snow from Marshall Elementary, teacher Trish Valles. It is also of note that all three of these students are fifth-grade scholars in our district.
Well, I think since it's my Christmas card, I need a picture with him.
All right. Could we please get all the winners and their teachers up in the horseshoe? Thank you.
Board, let's join them in the horseshoe.
So, good evening, President Newhouse, Dr. Watson, esteemed members of the Board. This evening's Point of Pride marks a recognition received by the district and our incredible Finance Department under Ann Westbrook's leadership. At this time, I'd like to invite up three employees whose work helped make this recognition possible. Our Budget Manager, Alicia Kennedy, Records Manager, Geraldo Roschin, and Web Specialist, Ronnie Canales. The Texas Comptroller's Transparency Stars Program was launched in 2016 to recognize cities, counties, and schools, districts making strides toward greater openness in their financial reporting. Earlier this fall, Spring ISD was awarded a Transparency Star in the category of Traditional Finances, which recognizes entities for going the extra mile to make financial information accessible and understandable to taxpayers. The district's dedicated financial transparency website played a key role in helping earn this award and we're grateful for the collaboration between Alicia, Geraldo, and Ronnie to create a site that was a great resource for stakeholders. Being a trusted source of information is one of our Every Child 2020 core commitments. The Comptroller's Transparency Star is a testament to this commitment. And while open, transparent communication requires the combined efforts of many people, tonight, we're especially grateful to Alicia, Geraldo, and Ronnie. As we celebrate this district award together, please join me in thanking them. And I know that Ann Westbrook's wanted to acknowledge and tell you a little bit more about this project and this award.
Just a few moments. So, the primary function of the Financial Services Team is to ensure that we're good stewards of the public funds that are entrusted to the district. And there is certainly no better way than to do that than through transparent transactions and through transparent operations. So, it's our sincere hope that by receiving this award, that we have made the community, you, our Board of Trustees, and our Superintendent proud because I know I certainly am. And I'm proud of all three of you for the hard work that you did above and beyond your regular duties to make sure that we receive the award. So, thank you.
We're going to have everyone walk the horseshoe and then we're going to get our picture. I'll let Jim direct you. He does a much better job at that. Congratulations. And that concludes our Points of Pride for this evening.
Thank you, Chief Ophill, for that presentation. Our next item is the election of Board Officers. In accordance with Board Policy BDAA, the Board of Trustees shall elect a President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary at the first meeting of the Board of Trustees following the election of trustees. First, however, the Board will recess into closed session pursuant to Governate Code Section 551.074 for the purpose of discussing the qualifications and duties of the Board Officers. The time is now 7:42 p.m. We will now reconvene and resume this open session, the Board Work Session. The time is now 7:53 p.m. Chief Hill will assume responsibility of the meeting to accept nominations for the position of Board President. After a president has been elected by a majority vote, the president accepts nomination and conducts voting for the position of Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary. Board Officers shall serve for a term of one year until a successor is elected. I will now ask Chief Hill to preside over this portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of Board President.
I would like to nominate Trustee Rhonda Newhouse for Board President.
Trustee Durant has nominated Rhonda Newhouse for Board President. It has been seconded by trustee Donald Davis. Are there any other nominations? As there are no further nominations, we will now vote. All those voting for Rhonda Newhouse as Board President, please raise your right hand. The vote carries unanimously. Rhonda Newhouse has been elected again as Board President. I will now turn the meeting back over to Board President Rhonda Newhouse.
Thank you, thank you. Why you said that too happily, Chief Hill? You were doing great. Thank you. At this time, I will entertain motion, nominations for the position of Board Vice President.
Madam President, I nominate Dr. Deborah Jensen for Vice President.
I second.
It has been nominated by Winford Adams Jr. and seconded by Janet Gonzalez. Are there any other nominations? As there are no further nominations, we will now vote. All those voting for Deborah Jensen as Board Vice President, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Jensen, serving as our Board Vice President. At this time, I will entertain nominations for the position of Board Secretary.
Madam President, I would like to nominate Don Davis as our Board Secretary.
Second then?
Deborah Jensen has nominated Don Davis, seconded by Janet Gonzalez. Are there any other nominations?
I think it was seconded by Justine Durant.
I'm sorry, by Justine Durant. Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we will now vote. All those voting for Don Davis, Secretary, please raise your right hand. The motion carries. Thank you, Captain Davis, for serving. You have been elected as our Board Secretary. I will entertain nominations for the position of Board Assistant Secretary.
Madam President, I nominate Winford Adams Jr. for the position of Board Assistant Secretary.
Second.
Kelly Hodges has nominated Winford Adams, seconded by Don Davis, for Board Assistant Secretary. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, as there's no further nominations, we will now vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Winford Adams. You've been elected as our Board Assistant Secretary. Thank you again to all of our Board Trustees for giving us the opportunity, the officers, to serve as your elected office, President, Vice President, Secretary, and Assistant Secretary. We promise to work very hard for you and represent you well.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to serve. Our next agenda item is public opportunity to speak on the agenda of those considered by the Board. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under Agenda Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. So, our next item is the Consent Agenda. To our guests in the, in the audience, the Board spent time working on these consent items last week. And just for your information, the consent items will consist of minutes of approval for the Board's Work Session November 7th, Regular Meeting November 12th, and the Special Call Session November 18th. It will also be approval for the Education Planning Guide, Internal Audit, Facility Use Agreement between Longstar College and North Harris Campus and Spring Independent School District, and the 2019-20 Compensation Plan, a memoriam memorandum of understanding between the Children's Assessment Center and the Spring Independent School District, and the Westfield Ninth Grade Center Third Guarantee Maximum Price. And last, it will include the taxpayers' refunds. So, at this time, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all the items listed on the Consent Agenda.
It's been moved by Janet Gonzalez, seconded by Justine Durant, that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion?
I did want to comment on the Substitute Pay Plan and sort of promote and thank Dr. Watson and the HR team for what we're doing in terms of staffing our schools when we have absences and we're being able to provide a good pay rate for our substitute teachers. I just wanted to make sure that that was said in this meeting.
Thank you. You did a very nice job on the compensation. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next is the Public Participation portion of our meeting. Chief Hill, do we have anyone registered to speak under Public Participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.071 for the purpose of a private consultation with the Board's Attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized. Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. And Texas Open Meeting Act Section 551.076 for the purpose of considering the deployment- of considering the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussions in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes an open session. The time is now 8:03 PM. We will now address the items discussed during our closed session as we can reconvene this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees at the time of 9:07 PM.
Madam President, I move that the board render a final order to terminate the contracts of the following employees and authorize the superintendent or designate to notify the employees of the action taken by the board. Shannon Burns, Vesna Chinn, Latasha Rose, and Kimberly Blazek.
Second.
It's been moved by Deborah Jensen, second by Justine Durant, that the board render a final order to terminate the contracts of the following employees and authorize the superintendent or designate to notify the employees of the action taken by the board. Shannon Burns, Vesna Chinn, Latasha Rose, and Kimberly Blazek. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board declare the contract of Carlay Pyle to be void pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code and approve the termination of her employment, Spring ISD effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designate to notify this employee of the action taken by the board.
Second.
It's been moved by Winford Adams, second by Dawn Davis, that the board declare the contract of Carlos Pyle to be void pursuant to Chapter 21 of the Texas Education Code and approve the termination of her employment, Spring ISD effective immediately. I further move that the board authorize the superintendent or designate to notify this employee of the action taken by the board. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move the board approves a resignation and release agreement in the termination appeal styled Spring ISD versus Lanny Malone, Docket 010-LH102019, as discussed in closed session.
Second.
It's been moved by Jana Gonzalez, second by Winford Adams Jr., that the board approve the resignation and release agreement and the termination appeal styled Spring ISD versus Lanny Malone, Docket Number 010-LH-10-2019, as discussed in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions?
Madam President, I move that the board approve the sale of Restricted Reserve B of Spring ISD New Stadium, a subdivision in Harris County, to the Harris County Municipal Utility District Number 82, as discussed in closed session.
Second.
It's been moved by Justine Durant, second by Jana Gonzalez.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I wasn't looking up. Let me start over. It has been moved by Justine Durant, second by Kelly Hodges, that the board approve the sale of Restricted Reserve B of Spring ISD New Stadium, a subdivision in Harris County, to Harris County Municipal Utilities District Number 82, as discussed in closed session. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other motions? As there are no other items on tonight's agenda, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
It has been moved by Justine Durant and second by Kelly Hodges that the Board of Trustees adjourn this meeting with our new first-time school board member. All those in favor, raise your right hand. The board, motion carries unanimously. There's no further business. The meeting is officially adjourned at 9:12 PM.